Okay.
Good.
As Chair of the Southampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order, number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Southampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 928-8437-5317, or by clicking on the website address which is listed on the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of SAU21 Office at www.sau21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call 781-534-3581 or email at mferreira, that's M-F-E-R-R-E-I-R-A at sau21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law.
Sorry about that. I'm actually taking on that role.
Thanks, Matt.
I'm already dropping the ball. Jim Kine.
I'm present and my mother's with me in the car, but I'm on headphones.
Sharon Gordon.
Present and alone.
Rebecca Burdick.
Present and alone.
Roll call is taken.
Great, thank you, Matt. So first, we have here is the public hearing on the trust fund. We are gonna just, sorry. Just connecting to my hotspot. The, so basically, the the meeting was posted, the legal notice was posted in the Newburyport Daily News and Hampton Union on April 23rd. The purpose of this is for the purchase of student Chromebooks and cases, which is $8,900 and staff replacement computers, which is $3,770. The withdrawal will come from the Computer Capital Reserve Fund and the expenditures will be for this purpose. That's what the purpose of the withdrawals for. The current ballot balance of the trust fund is, as of October 30th, 2020, was $19,692. Is there anybody in the public that wants to make a comment? I can't see participants. If you want to have anybody.
We have one attendee. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. And that is a no, Mr. Kine.
So can I get a motion to authorize the withdrawal of $12,670 from the Southampton Computer Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of?
I'm sorry, Jim. So we're just going, we're gonna close the public hearing and then later in the agenda, we'll do the motion to withdraw.
Okay, awesome. I'm back on the hotspot. I want to pick up on that. All right, cool. So can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion. My second.
There a second? Great, thank you.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
Erin Gordon.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
So I'm gonna drop off video and probably start driving again. So next, we have public comment. Does anybody have any public comment? Please raise your hand.
That is a no, Mr. Kine.
Okay, great, thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration of the minutes from April 1st, 2021. Does anybody have any comments?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
A second.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you very much. Next, I believe is the Superintendent Report.
Yes, thank you. You have my report. I'll just highlight a few pieces here. First, an important point about, you know, our adults, staff, faculty and staff, although we have had access to vaccines and many of our faculty and staff are fully vaccinated as of, as we came back to school this week. We're still following all of our same safety protocols, so six-foot distancing, wearing masks, keeping cohorts, minimizing transitions, and, and holding school five days a week, having students in school every day. So that's an important piece that we have had some questions about and I wanted to make sure at our board meetings that we are still, we're underscoring that this is, we're still taking these very seriously. Students are not vaccinated, so, and this is a commitment we've made to our teachers that we're keeping with these safety protocols. I see Jim has dropped off, but I will keep going. Next, an announcement that the closed pod for students age 16 and up is happening at Winnicott. Their first dose will be this Friday. And we just received word that we'll host a clinic for students age 12 to 15. And this has been announced to board members and principals and school nurses, and we plan to inform families tomorrow as well as share a survey to identify the level of interest, to determine how many families are interested in participating in a school clinic for students age 12 to 15. The Seacoast Public Health Network has confirmed with us that the Pfizer vaccine will be approved this week for students age 12 to 15. The first dose will be on May 26th and the second will be on June 18th. More information will come out about that tomorrow to all families. And then lastly, I outlined, there's some other really great things going on. Our homeless liaisons in our schools are, their professional development is in full swing. They held incredibly successful regional professional development session. It's supposed to be for the region, but the entire state, all the liaisons in the state of New Hampshire showed up. It is a benefit of the Zoom platform. So that's fantastic, the professional development that is offered for homeless liaisons. And then we're also planning one that is officially for the state statewide to be held on May 21st with some excellent guest speakers. And that's it for my report. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Next, I believe we have the Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Jim. I've got four updates for the board. First is Superintendent Search. I think we all remember, we had the Joint Board last night and put forward a name. Meredith Nado was recommended to move forward as our candidate and we are currently working with her on contracts. Second is the statewide assessment. I wanted to make sure that the board knew that we are entering assessment season, as it were. We are gonna be taking the statewide assessments. The window is from March 8th to June 11th, so it's a pretty huge window for that online test. And I would guess that a lot of the schools are pushing back the date a little bit more, a little later in the window in order to get more school time in prior to the test. And those, just a couple of things on that. One is math and ELA are grades three through eight. And science is only a benchmark year is five, eight, and 11. And of course, the test has to be taken, it's an online test, but it has to be taken while the student is in the school. So we are working with our Remote Learning Academy students to get them in, those that want to take the test. Of course, there's always an opt-out option. Third is the CBE presentations. Obviously, you guys have seen some teachers from the middle, from Barnard at the middle school presenting student work and some of their planning around CBE. The, over the course of the summer and into the fall, I see those presentations not only continuing, but also getting a little bit more technical in terms of our reporting processes. There are a lot of tools that we can use and a lot of ways that we can convey information to moms and dads. So we're looking forward to showing you and the public ways that they can get information on their students around competencies and standards. And then last is the certification update. We have, we have made our certifications for the 2021 cycle. Yay to everybody. So we are in good shape going into the 2021, 2022 school year for that. And unless there are any questions, move to the next.
Very good news on the certification. Thank you.
Yeah. All right.
Great. I think next is the Principal's Report.
You have my report. I'm just gonna highlight a few things. As Dave said, state testing. Can you guys hear me? Okay, sometimes we can't hear. State testing, we started this week, our state testing. We have issues because we have part-time staff, so we have to spread it out over the month. But it's going well. We've also started our extra, some extracurricular activities with the sports club for grades four through eight. We have over 30 students that are participating and that's been really successful. The students are loving it. So we're really happy that we did that. We're also gonna be able to have a field day. We figured out a way to maintain our cohorts and have a COVID-friendly field day that will take place on June 2nd. Our sixth graders completed their DARE program and we'll be having a DARE graduation for them with Officer Steve Petrowski on May 27th. He's been amazing and really supportive of our students and we're really lucky to have him and we thank him for his involvement in the program and for doing such a great job for our students. We are gonna have an eighth grade graduation, which is gonna be on June 10th at 6:00 PM with a rain date of June 14th. Will be requiring social distancing and mask wearing. We're excited to be able to offer that in person this year. And we've been working on some field trips. The eighth graders are, came to me with a proposal of trips that they wanted to take, just minor trips to celebrate eighth grade and leaving Barnard School. So some of them, I can't allow them to do because of COVID, but quite a few we can. So we'll be working on that in the coming weeks. So we are gonna be able to do something special for them, which I'm really happy about because they deserve it. Alicia Kernis, our reading specialist, is on maternity leave for the rest of the year. She had a baby girl on Sunday. And Patty Cole, our Spanish teacher, part-time Spanish teacher, has stepped in that role to fill her position for the rest of the year. And she's doing a fantastic job and she's really stepped right in and it's been a really smooth transition. And then we're gonna be, as Dave was talking about with competency-based teaching, we're planning to have a parent forum on May 27th at 6:00 PM. It'll be virtual. The link will be going out soon. And the goal is really to educate families on what competency-based education is and also to talk about the grading because it's going to change this. At the end of the year, the middle school students will have a dual reporting. It will be a traditional grade as well as a competency grade and we just want to make sure that parents understand that transition. And next year, we will be just doing competency grading only. So we want to make sure that everybody understands why we're doing that and what the whole shift means. And then finally, we're having some issues with our water filtration system. It's causing water pressure problems. Usually, it, the middle of the day, we, the water is just trickling out of our sink. We had no water for a few hours. One day, we had to call Aqua Specialties to come and fix it for us. It's a temporary fix, but we're gonna need to replace it sooner rather than later. I just wanted to put that on your radar. And that's, is there any questions?
Michelle, is the, is it the water filtration system, like the water bottle filler or is it something else?
No, it's the system, the water. Our whole water system has to go through a filtration system to be used and it takes, it's an art, it takes, it takes the arsenic out of our water.
Yes.
And it's about 15 to 20 years old. So it's about time we need to replace it.
Okay. And then for the eighth grade graduation, is it gonna be, have you guys thought about how many guests they can have or anything like that or?
There's only seven students, so I pretty much as many, we think we, and we have, we're gonna have it outside. It's, there's tons of space. So I think as many people as you want to come, we can, families can be together. It's just, there has to be six foot space in between the families.
Okay.
So I don't think we really need to have any limitations.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. I think it's great that the eighth graders will be able to do some kind of, you know, field trips. That's really good news.
Yeah, I'm excited for them. And the things they want to do are so innocent and nice, but it's just such a great thing to be able to let them do.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, thank you very much. Next, I believe is Facilities Report or Finance Report, excuse me.
Yes, Finance. So we have attached the fiscal year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports. There haven't been any changes from prior month. As you recall, we did, you know, withdraw some funds from the Special Education Expendable Trust because we were, we do have a tight budget this year. However, we are looking good as we, as we are, you know, finishing up this fiscal year as a, you know, June 30th, 2021. So we don't, we don't anticipate any issues for year end and we are, you know, Michelle's doing a great job of managing the funds for this remainder. I will note that, you know, Michelle did mention the the water filtration. We did meet Michelle, myself, Peter Joya, who's responsible for Facilities, our water operator, Aqua Specialties, and Lee Knapp a couple of weeks ago to, to inspect the, the water filtration system and to determine, you know, what the appropriate next steps are. We are all in agreement and when we're all in agreement, I think Michelle and I are taking the advice from, from Lee, Peter and, and the water operator. But they, they are, they were in full agreement to that it does need to be replaced. So this will cost approximately, you know, we're, you know, right now, we're, we're out, we're looking at options. But we're estimating it'll be in the $5,000 range, which, you know, we, we would look at potentially using year-end funds. It does look like we will have a balance for this fiscal year that could absorb that cost. But that will be something that we'll, we'll update you on in June. I also want to note the, you know, I had mentioned last month that the fire alarm system needs to be replaced. That, that's going out to RFP. Again, that's probably gonna be in the $30,000 range. That, that's an item that we'd be looking to make a withdrawal from the building management's expendable trust. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have in regard to finance or facilities.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. I don't really remember the agenda from here on out in the specific order, so I'm gonna need a little help from here on out.
So the next item is under new business. It's withdrawal from the Computer Capital Reserve Trust Fund. And there is a motion included in board docs. If, or I can read it to you?
I think you can just read it.
Certainly. So the motion is to withdraw $12,670 from the Computer Capital Reserve Trust Fund to purchase the student Chromebooks, cases and staff replacement computers.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And I will roll call Jim Kine.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
Okay. Vote. Vote is taken. Unanimous. So the next item on the agenda is Facilities Committee. So what this is in reference to is, as you know, we have a number of committees where there is a board representative. We noted that there is not a Facilities Committee, a formal Facilities Committee that we've formed historically. And we felt it was prudent to, we, to put together a committee. We, we already are starting internally, but we felt that a board representative would be appropriate in this case. As you know, some of our systems are aging. As we referenced earlier in this meeting, there, there are some repairs or replacements that we're looking at, you know, completing. And there are some other items on our facilities plan as we look forward and for the next few years. So what we're asking for is a nomination or an appointment for a Facilities Committee Representative.
What's the, how often are you thinking it's gonna meet, they're gonna meet?
Um, you know, I think we will plan to meet quarterly and then on an as-needed basis if there's, you know, something pressing.
Do you want to be nominated, Sharon?
Yeah, unless somebody else feels a deep desire, I'm happy to do it.
Jim?
I'm totally happy with Sharon and doing it.
Jim, but you and Lee can talk all about it. I'm kidding, I'm happy to do it.
I'll nominate Sharon Gordon for the.
Talk to me about it anyway, though. It was a board goal that we.
Did you get that? As the Facilities, Representative for the Facilities Committee?
Jim, do you second that?
I did, yes. I second it.
All right, I'll take a roll call. I'm Jim Kine.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
Thanks for testing it.
Thanks for volunteering, Sharon. Yeah, this was actually a board goal of ours a few years ago and then I think it just got lost in the shuffle as we were transitioning principals and then obviously COVID. So one of the things, just given the age of the building and it's just getting an idea over the next few years of what the kind of potential costs are gonna be and needs are gonna be, just so we can plan for it with regard to, you know, budget season over the next few years. So it's a pretty, I think it's gonna be a pretty important, just to kind of get an idea of what that looks like.
Yeah, we had had a Facilities Committee like years back. I was on it, but it was like, I don't know who was on it. It was like parents and, do you remember that, Jim? What Kim was on the school board. Oh, Becky, you were on the school board.
I remember. It was, I think a couple of the Budget Committee members were on it. Couple of parents. I think Lee might have even been on it. And we did, we had a list somewhere of things that we wanted to target. I mean, I'm sure that's somewhere in some notes.
So we did, we did conduct a Facilities Audit since I've been here. So we do have that report. I was not here when there was that kind of community-wide Facilities Committee. We were, so we were thinking for this Facilities Committee would be, you know, the, you know, administration, facilities internally with a board rep. But we could certainly expand this committee if you'd like to include community members.
It was super, I mean, I, I don't recall it being very productive, like it.
Yeah, we try, we, I mean, Lee, Lee Knapp is someone that we consult on a regular basis for facilities because he is so, he has such expertise for the, you know, in general, but the building specifically. So he's always someone that we reach out to. And then, you know, specific to various building-related items, we, you know, I, I was on a call with Lee and Steve Belsalvage probably a month ago because, in regards to the gymnasium roof, because Steve is a gym, I mean, a roof guy. So luckily, we do have some, some, you know, professionals in the community that we can always reach out to for specific projects. But in the, you know, in the meantime, I think it'd be good just for us internally to start, you know, really take a closer look at facilities, like Jim said, start to, you know, really lock in some, some long, long range or long, short-term and long-term planning and then, and then we can budget accordingly. Because these are, as you know, these are, can be, you know, higher cost items.
I think the Facilities Meeting started way back when we were doing the Science Room, if that.
Yes.
I think that's how far back it's been.
That was a while. No, that's great.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is Policies First Read.
Matt, I think we have the Federal Grant General Assurances.
Oh. Thank you, yes. So yes, the next item is Federal Grant General Assurances. So this is, these are general assurances that are required for the board to see on an annual basis. And then the Superintendent and the Board Chair both sign off on it. It's essentially assuring or making the statement that we are following those federal guidelines, which are, you know, outlined in our board policies and we do abide by it. So be happy to answer any questions in regard to those general assurances. Hearing no questions, we will, we will send that to Dr. Eric Kalian and Mr. Kine for their, for their signatures likely tomorrow. All right, the next agenda item is Policies First Read. Did you want to speak about on that, Dave or Carolyn?
I'm, I'm happy to. These are the policies that were brought forward from our Joint Board Policy Committee. I'm happy to address questions. Dr. Hobbs and I and, and Mr. Ferrera brought forward these policies so we can, we can speak to, we can speak to, we each have a few we can speak to here, so. Any questions? This is really just for discussion and review. No vote required today.
I was also with them.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm good. I sat on the Policy Committee meeting for Becky, so.
That's right, that's right.
And did you hear, Becky, I voted you in for something? I nominated you for something.
What did you nominate me for?
I can't remember.
Is it, is it meetings?
It was something. You'll, I'll have to. It was like assistant something or chair, vice chair or something. It wasn't like the main person.
Oh, okay, okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Or Becky, that always happens to you.
I, I know, when I'm never, I mean, I'm not there and I get voted in, I don't understand.
No fair. Okay, thank you, well let us know if there are any questions, and I can move on to the next.
When's the next meeting, seeing as how I wasn't at the other one?
The next policy meeting?
Yes, is there a set date?
That one is not, that one might not be until the fall.
Oh, perfect, that's even better.
We usually do those pretty much quarterly.
Okay.
And so I believe not until the fall.
Okay.
November.
Sorry, I missed the, the one and only of the end of the year, thank you Sharon for stepping in.
You're welcome, it was fun.
Thank you very much. So this next agenda item, Full Day Kindergarten Committee. We wanted to put this on the agenda just as a, a point of discussion, because Michelle is receiving some, some requests from the community for us to look into this again, explore options, see what we can provide, see what, you know, the, the needs are going forward. I think there are a few community members who are interested in Full Day Kindergarten sooner rather than later. However, we know that in order to do this properly, you know, to ensure that it's going to be a successful program, we'd like to put together a committee so they can, they can look at all of these options and, and the needs and the challenges, and keep the board informed all along. So I don't know, Michelle, if you wanted to add a piece to that, but I think it does take some time, because as you know, there can be, there can, there can be a ripple effect with any change, particularly in a smaller school, when you're looking at a change in one grade level, it can impact staff all the way up. So we want to make sure that we make careful decisions and bring forward all the information, so we can make informed decisions, but Michelle, did you want to add anything there?
I do just want to add that I have been notified from a parent who it says that he has a group of parents who are interested in possibly privately funding kindergarten for next year. I told them that I would bring the idea to the board, and, you know, see what you all think of it. And I did explain, you know, it's not sustainable if we do it that way. And they were understanding, but I just, I wanted to do diligence and let you know that that's what people are talking about.
That, that, so it would just be for one year, that, and then we'd have to figure out what to do after that?
It would have to be whatever, whatever you decide, that's why I think if we put a committee together, it would you would have better chance of, you know, thinking about the best way to go about it.
How many kids are in kindergarten next year?
Right now, there's 12.
And certainly, certainly, it's not just the cost, right? It takes incredible planning and coordination with, with several grade levels, because it would, it could potentially make or force some changes going all the way up. So I think our response to that would be to put a committee together to, to gather the data and take it from there.
Yeah, that makes sense, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, so we did do a, we had a committee formed, it was probably four-ish years ago, maybe five, where we looked at Full Day Kindergarten. And so, you know, what we did in that scenario, I think we had members, some staff members, community members, parents, you know, kind of go through everything, it was a, it was a really, I was, I did partake in that, as before I was on the school board. I thought it was a really well-done committee, and I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be a good amount of interest within the community. You know, this was, I'll obviously say five years ago, just off the cuff, I don't know exactly how far back it was, but we did surveys within town, at that time, it was about a 50-50 split. I do think there's been a kind of a transition within South Hampton a bit, from people moving into town, younger, young families moving into town, so I can definitely understand that there's a large degree of interest, and I think it's a great idea to form a, a committee to, to take a look at this again and see what we can do, but in a sustainable way for a long period of time. I really, I, I understand parents' interest and desire to fund, because, you know, once you go into a full-day kindergarten model, you, I think we would want to be there permanently, and this has been a goal that I've written in our annual report for the last two, I think it was two years, clearly year pluses. Made that where we couldn't really look at it this year, so I think that we did, that thing knows plan. With something that will work.
I, I think if I remember correctly, one of the biggest issues was really, I think where, like, a lot of the questioning came was how you were going to do the grade, if you were gonna like do kindergarten in first grade a, at the end of the day together, if you were gonna try to keep kindergarten by themselves the whole day, and then one, two, I, that, I think that's where, like, a lot of the questioning came, if I remember correctly, Jim, right? Like, that's where we were kind of struggling?
It was, yeah, so that, and it's also the cost, right? So you had to bring in, uh, yeah, it did increase the cost structure for the school. Now, the positive is there really wasn't a building cost increase, but there was definitely a staffing increase. And I think kind of those two factors, along with when we looked back at it, just, I think, from my recollection, the data at the time showed that there was a benefit to the children, but that that benefit tended to even out by the time they hit third grade. So I think, so, you know, it was a while back, but there was, there definitely is a trend nationally to go down this route, and I, I do think it's appropriate, we take a look at it again and see if we can figure it out.
I think so too, and I think Becky, like, to your point, that is something that the committee would have to consider, too, is, you know, would we have to change the structure of our combine, combined classes, and how would we go about that? And I think I would, I would prefer to take our time and do it right than to put something quickly together.
Agreed, so the committee would look at all of those potential problems and kind of weed through those things, I think that's a good idea.
And it's for the 21, 22 school year, or the 22, 23?
It would be something the committee would have to decide.
But it's somebody, is somebody who wants to fund it going to kindergarten next year?
Somebody, somebody has approached me with a possibility of funding this coming school year, 21, 22.
That's fast.
Yeah, that's right, I agree.
Yeah, I think, you know, my view on this is typically when I've seen these, it, it has gone to some form of town vote. Or it's definitely wrapped into the budget plan, right, so I, I'd be really reluctant to do that, to do something for one year in school without having gone through that process of, because it's, this is actually a pretty big deal within a town. And, you know, quite frankly, we, we did have a pretty large budget increase last year, and the vote, while, while it passed, was much closer than it has been in previous years, and I think that's something we also have to take into consideration when putting together our plans.
The next, so the next school year, you're hoping and planning that you're gonna have your regular school day, instead of getting out, like, is that the, is that the vision, to try to keep the day till 2:30?
We're, we're hoping to go back to a regular schedule.
Okay, so that gives them, they're out at 11:30 now, right? The, the kindergarten kids?
Kindergarten?
Yeah, kindergarten's out at 11:05 or 11:30?
They're done at noon.
Noon, okay, but on their, like, last year, like, without COVID, they were noon also?
I believe they were noon, yeah. I think one other thing to think about, too, with privately funding is, I think, we run into some equity issues there, too. Which is a concern for me.
Yes. So what we'll do, if this makes sense for, for the board, we will, you know, support Michelle, I think Dr. Hobbs can be definitely a source of support on this, and put together what that, what that might look like for the committee, and keep the board informed going forward, so where the committee is, what the questions they'll be asking and answering and researching, and they'll keep the board informed next year.
Who are you envisioning makes up this committee? I mean,
I, I would like to have school board representation, parent representation, teacher, teachers, and community members.
It might even be helpful to have someone who was on the committee before. You know, in 2014.
Don Abidian is interested in it, too, and she was on the committee before, so.
Oh, great.
I think Ms. Casassa was on it, or Ms. Moran, maybe?
It was Ms. Moran. Yeah, I mean, from a school board perspective, I could be on it, I, I would like to be on it, especially since I was last time. And I would also encourage that we reach out to community members that can also be part of it.
Great. Thank you very much.
So the next agenda item, Jim, is the Alternative Compliance Library Plan.
Yeah, so this is a plan, because we don't have a school library, library, we have to prove that we have access to library resources and qualified staff in library media, and a library media specialist, and that our students have access to library materials. And it's a compliance request form that we have to send in every four years, and it is up, it was up in 2020, so we just need your approval and to send us forward.
So the motion is to approve the 2021-2025 Barnard School Alternative Compliance Library Plan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Take roll call votes, Jim Kime? Jim Kime?
Yes.
Looks like Jim's unmuted. We can hear you, thank you. Sharon Gordon?
Yep.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick? Rebecca Burdick?
Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Vote taken, unanimous. So the next item is Personnel.
Which, right, we'll go into non-public for.
Okay. So moving on to Continuing Businesses, the Superintendent Search Update.
I can answer any questions, but I think we're we're good.
Okay, so that brings us to the next meeting dates, Jim, you want me to just go through those dates for you? I will. So the SEU 21 Operations Committee is scheduled for Thursday, May 13th at 5:30 PM. We have the SEU 21 Joint Board Meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 25th at 6:00 PM. The next Southampton School Board Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 3rd at 4:30 PM. And at this point, we will look for a motion to go on, go into non-public under RSA 91 dash A colon three eight A and E.
I'll make that motion.
I second. Also, just wanted to let everybody know that the Amesbury High School is having a graduation also, so the Barnard school kids that will be graduating will have a graduation.
Thank you. So I'll take roll call for non-public, that is Jim Kime?
Yes.
Karen Gordon?
Yes.
And Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
We will now be moving into non-public, David, are we going to?
Okay, it worked, we're back in public session. And recording, so we'll take
Motion to adjourn the non-public session and resume the public meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
We are back in public. One second. Trying to take the minutes. So the next agenda item is a motion to accept the resignation of Heather Lindsay effective June 30th, 2021.
I'll make that motion, regrettably.
A second.
Take roll call votes, Jim Kime?
Yes.
Karen Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
The next agenda item is a motion to accept the resignation of Corey Wells effective June 30th, 2021.
Sadly, I'll make that motion as well.
I'll second it.
Roll call votes, Jim Kime?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
Next agenda item is a motion to approve the interim superintendent's nomination of Tomasz Schweckheimer for the 0.2 physical education teacher position for the 2021-2022 school year.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
And we will take roll call votes, Jim Kime? We have Jim Kime?
Yes.
Thank you, Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote. And that brings us to the, the end of our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn at 5:27.
A second.
And roll call vote, Jim Kime?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
And Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that concludes our meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye. Bye.